Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting into order. It is six oh four. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Lonzo.
Here.
Councilmember Romero.
Present.
Mayor Protem Damayo.
Here.
Councilmember Peralta.
Mayor Melendez.
And I am here. All right. If I can please have the announcement on the closed session items?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I can inquire for the city clerk. Is Councilmember, I'm sorry, Peralta also online? And if I may state that Councilmember Peralta is participating tonight under the just cause provisions of the Brown Act. So she is authorized and allowed to participate in tonight's city council meeting. And at this time, it would be appropriate to inquire if there's any public comments on closed session items. Do we have any public comments?
We have none.
Okay. Then we have items one through four for closed session. Be appropriate for the city council to recess into closed session.
Okay. At this time, we'll go into closed session. And we'll be right back after we discuss all the items. Thank you.
This meeting back into order and I'll turn over to our city attorney to provide a report on the closed session items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The record should reflect that the city council with all five members participating in closed sessions should be further noted that Councilmember Peralta participated under the just cause provisions of the Brown Act remotely. All four items that were listed on the agenda and announced prior to recessing to closed sessions were discussed. Were discussed in closed session. The record should further reflect that there is no required matters that are required to be reported at this time. And the items were all discussed in closed session. That concludes my report. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you for the report. At this time, I'll ask our city clerk to lead us in the invocation and I'll ask our fire chief for the pledge of allegiance. If you can all please rise.
As we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better community. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Let's place our hand over our heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both to our city clerk and to our fire chief. I'll move on to any corrections to the agenda. City manager?
Yes, Mayor. Item number five, the penny ceremony for firefighter Edgar Ramirez will be moved to a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our ceremonial items and presentation and we'll move forward with item number six, the Washington Corridor Transit Oriented Communities and Multimodal Connectivity Specific Plan Project. And I believe we have a presentation by Phil Burns from the Royo Group.
Good evening, Mayor Menendez and esteemed members of the city council. I'm here joined by Alex Lopez of Activist G V who will be helping me to make the presentation today. I'm here today to give you a brief introduction to the Washington Corridor specific plan. Of course, you're familiar with the project from having received, you know, applied for the grant and approving the contract for it. We have begun our work in service of the, in service of the city, identifying all of the opportunities, challenges, and beginning now to think about what exciting changes can we begin to envision for this area? And put into practice through appropriate regulations that will move that vision forward and a strong implementation strategy as well to ensure that the vision doesn't remain just a vision but becomes the actual reality. For the Washington Greenwood and indeed the entire Monobello community. So as you're aware, the Transit Oriented Communities Multimodal Community Specific Plan is oriented around the future station on the E-line extension at the corner of Washington and Greenwood. The goals are really improving access and safety for walking, biking, and transit around the station, supporting local businesses and attracting new development to create a more vibrant transit oriented district. And also expanding housing options near transit to meet the community needs and in particular to promote long-term affordability through affordable housing. You're well aware with some of the challenges that we have in this section of the city, particularly along Washington Boulevard itself as we think about trying to achieve these goals in reality in this area. It's a major truck route, three lanes in each direction, pretty high traffic volumes in this area, poised to get even more densely packed. Once the rail line goes into the median of Washington Boulevard. And, you know, we have seen some examples of how this has been implemented in other parts of the metro system, not always terribly successfully. You know, and so it is definitely a challenge for us to figure out how to figure out, figure out how to incorporate all of these things along Washington Boulevard while also making the street a setting that is beautiful, that is pedestrian friendly, that is appropriate for living, working, visiting, et cetera. Some of the other challenges that we face in the area are the lack of, you know, commercial amenities to meet community needs. We've looked at the most common places where residents of this area go to shop. And, and they're not within the city of Monobello and not within this area. So there's really an opportunity, but also a challenge, right, of trying to bring retail amenities and other amenities that people need for daily life much closer to where people live. While also dealing with some of the economic conditions that we're facing currently, both macroeconomic conditions as well as, you know, some of the, some of the unique conditions that we have in this area that have not attracted a lot of development to date. But there's also great opportunities, right? And that is why you all have decided to embark on this plan and we, you know, and we share that enthusiasm. It really starts with the metro itself. Which will bring more people into the area and increase the, the desire for walking, biking, and in general activating this area. Also opportunities for new housing, commuter serving retail, neighborhood serving retail. And, and the rail construction will affect the street, right, giving us the opportunity to propose a new design really for Washington Boulevard. And some of the areas around it, including, you know, potential property acquisition from Metro for Park and Ride or other amenities that they may embark on. So at this point, I'm going to, I'm going to just skip over these here and I'm going to jump to the, to the community engagement, which Activist G V, which Alex will share about.
Hi, yeah. So at Activist G V, we do a lot of community engagement. So we have done three different pop-ups to share the project and collect feedback. One was at the downtown street fair, which was super popular and well attended and we're pleasantly surprised that so many residents were familiar with the extension of the E-line and we're also excited to be able to give, to have a space to provide input. We also did a pop-up at the Greenwood Elementary Back to School Night, which is in the project area. And we did really want to connect with residents in the area that would be most impacted by the project. And lastly, we presented at the, or we had a pop-up at the Heritage Day Festival last weekend. We also hosted a community walk on September 13th and a community bike ride along the Washington Corridor. Where we asked participants the types of, or the issues they currently saw and the reality or the future that they see for the Washington Corridor. And, yeah, collecting community feedback and their vision for the area. We also have conducted two community presentations, one of them at Sher High School during their Go Green Club. It was during their lunch hour and my colleague Marlin presented to them about the project and asked if they had any... and asked if they had any ideas or what their suggestions were for the project. And the Monobello Rotary Club, where we were able to engage with a couple of business owners in the project area who shared concern over potential displacement of the current businesses and the priority to engage them in the plan, along with other great feedback. Did you wanna share this question about this survey? Okay. Okay, so some of the survey highlights were that residents really prioritize safer sidewalks and crosswalks, more green spaces and trees, and more transit-oriented development. So seventy-eight percent of the respondents noted that the TOD should be affordable for low and middle-income households. Seventy percent shared new development should be easily accessible by walking or biking. And the station area amenities that folks most wanted were parks and open spaces, restaurants and cafes, and grocery stores. So the key outreach summary or key takeaways, the number one concern was safety. A lot of community members voiced that vehicle speeds in the area are really fast and biking conditions are really unsafe. And the specific community requests included wider sidewalks, protected bike lanes, high-visibility crosswalks, leading pedestrian intervals, lower speed limits, especially around the Greenwood Elementary School. There were also requests to better activate and beautify the Rio Hondo River Trail to encourage greater use around the area. Another concern was, or desire for green spaces and shade. I don't know if you guys ever spend any time around the corridor, but it is, there's almost no trees, so that was definitely something that was constantly brought up. And the development preferences that community members shared that they envision, a hub with parks, green spaces, and well, as well as small businesses like grocery stores, cafes, and restaurants.
So as we move into the phase of our project where we're gonna begin to design, I think what we've really taken from this initial examination of the conditions and the outreach that we've conducted so far is that there is a strong desire for this, by the residents of this neighborhood, to be a much more livable neighborhood. They certainly feel today how they lack certain, you know, basic amenities and a livable environment in which, you know, upon which to kind of center their, their neighborhood. And so the introduction of metro really is that, you know, maybe once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this neighborhood to transform it into a place that has, that is focused on open space, a healthy and safe environment, expanded opportunities for affordable housing, and local amenities, right, to help residents fulfill their daily needs. So as we move forward, we are kind of looking to advance in this direction and again, develop the conceptual designs, plans for the public right-of-way, the zoning, et cetera, all of the components of the specific plan, which will, which will put that into place. I'd be happy to take your feedback on this as well as your comments and questions to help guide us as we move forward.
Thank you for your, for the presentation. I'll look to see if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments. Mayor Protem?
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity. So I know SB 79 was just signed by the governor in October of 2025. What would be the impact of that to a project like this? Because it's where cities are being required to create denser housing along the transit corridors, of which this would be something that would fall under, I believe, the SB 79.
Yes, so from a, at a high level, what SB 79 is trying to do is the same thing that this specific plan is intending to do, right? In encouraging development, particularly, you know, mixed-income housing and affordable housing around metro transit stations. So it's largely consistent, we'll say, that the provisions of the bill are, are different than perhaps what the city might do without SB 79. There are ways to kind of orient this project to diminish the short-term impacts of SB 79, should that be a direction that the, you know, that the, that the city direct for this project? But from a high-level perspective, it is, you know, it is consistent.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Uh, yes. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I definitely, this is an exciting project to be a part of. I was curious when they were talking about the outreach to the community and what their concerns were, but a lot of the concerns that the community addressed would, would be concerns that I have as well because in that part of the city, unfortunately, there, there's very minimal greenery and the South Side definitely has needed a lot of attention and this is exciting that we're able to bring this and to bring some major changes to the South Side, so I'm excited about this project.
Just again, thank you for the presentation and I do wanna highlight and just thank you both for the community outreach that you all did. I was able to participate. In one of the walks, I had my dog that was just be, was just dragging me everywhere, but we were able to be there and we were able to actually meet some of the residents that had, that pointed out some of the concerns, some of the issues. And I also do wanna thank our community development team for being there. I know it was on a Saturday and you all were working there to receive the input from, from our residents and my only question is, so we did the community outreach this last month, now for the adoption of the specific plan, when, what timeline are we looking for, for us to see maybe what the final specific plan would look like?
Yeah, so we're anticipating, we're gonna take the next several months to really work on the development of the plan that hopefully will involve as well some coordination with metro, because obviously the, you know, the design of Washington Boulevard itself with the new rail line in it is, you know, one of the, the most important issues in this plan. So we are hoping to, to work to coordinate with them as well as develop the kind of other major aspects of the plan over the next couple of months, anticipating around February, we will have new, you know, kind of information to share, be able to go back, come back to, to, you know, council, come back to the community with, with those ideas and get feedback on them. Then after that, we would be kind of finding, putting the document in its actual final form and then taking it through the public hearing process.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, anyone who wishes to address the city council would have had to fill out a card and turn it in to city clerk. If you have not yet turned in a card, you will not be recognized for public comment. Mr. City Clerk, have you received any cards for non-agenda items?
Yes, we have a total of three speaker cards.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed with the first comment.
First speaker is Antonio with the Community Alliance for Healthy Outdoor Spaces.
Can you guys hear me? Perfect, good. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members and city staff. My name is Antonio and I'm speaking on behalf of Community Alliance for Healthy Outdoor Spaces, or CAHOS for short. We are a community-led coalition that has spent the past three years educating the Monobello community on the dangers of second-hand smoke in outdoor spaces. About eight months ago, my colleagues and I delivered an educational presentation to the city council to highlight the mission, milestone, and the goals of our coalition. Since then, we've hosted two more Monobello family cleanup days on which, on which was in collaboration with council member Alonso, so thank you for that. We also participated in concerts in the park, ran the Heritage 5K, and had the incredible opportunity to get to know you all better, so including city clerk Christopher Jimenez, city manager Alvarez, Davis Zisnowski, director Palombi, and assistant city manager Anhelia. One other note, we are excited to invite the community to join our CAHOS Community Park Cleanup this coming Saturday, October 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Monobello City Park. Supplies will be provided. We encourage those interested to pick up an event flyer, which I have here, and more information will be provided in the QR code. Lastly, CAHOS would like to express its gratitude to the city manager, city staff, the council mayor, Protem, and the mayor for their support. We truly appreciate the time, partnership, and the trust that you all have extended to our coalition, and we hope to make you all proud as we continue to forge a path to a more smoke-free outdoor space in Monobello. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker?
Next speaker, we have Cheryl with CAHOS as well, and then followed by Raul Hurtado.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Salvador Menendez, council members and city staff. My name is Cheryl Bishop. I work with the Scleroderma Foundation of California in my city of Monobello to create awareness for this rare autoimmune disease that, for which I was diagnosed. I'm also a proud member of the Community Alliance for Healthy Outdoor Spaces, CAHOS, a community-led coalition dedicated to improving health, well-being, and educating Monobello residents about the dangers of second-hand smoke in outdoor areas. I wanna thank CAHOS for their strong community president, presence over the past three years and for their commitment to creating healthier, smoke-free public spaces. I even had the opportunity to attend, attend a town hall meeting, October 2024. As someone living with a compromised immune system along with interstitial lung disease, my lungs are already working overtime because of the fibrosis, so second-hand smoke adds an extra layer of inflammation, which my body can't afford and can cause a real setback for me. Lung disease is not always visible. Not everyone with lung disease walks around with an oxygen tank. Being around second-hand smoke not only makes breathing harder in the moment, but also has the effects of lasting for several hours afterwards. And lastly, I have learned how fragile lung health can be and how precious it is by living with my own compromised lungs. So supporting CAHOS and protecting clean air not only helps the scleroderma community but also helps everyone live healthier lives. So please join me in supporting CAHOS efforts to keep Monobello's air clean and for our outdoor spaces healthy for everyone to enjoy.
Thank you for your comment. If we can have the next speaker?
Next speaker is Raul Hurtado.
Good evening. As promised, I'd wanted to give you a rundown, three-minute series each meeting about how the chief got his job. And I didn't know where to start, so I'm just gonna start from the very beginning. When Espinoza was selected by Rene Bobadilla, the previous city manager, our now chief went out on an ego sickness because I guess he thought he was, had entitlement to the job, and fortunately, somebody else better than him was selected. I wanna cut it right there and I'll come back and continue it at the next meeting because I do wanna give Chief Lopez a chance to get his mole to arouse the associations again, and maybe they wanna come to the next meetings because I'll be speaking at them. Maybe he wants me even bring that Shady Meat Company that you guys gave an award to and praised him. And I do have to say that after that letter that mentioned me in there to get to the association president was very wrong, like I said, the gloves are off. This man, if he's out there in the field with one of the other officers, I suggest the other officers wear their full-protection vests and everything like that because as we know, he's already shot at one of his partners. He is also stole from the city, and now he's up for a promotion. So I'll leave it there and I'll be back at the next meeting and hope all the associations are here again because I'm encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other speakers?
No, Mayor. That concludes our speaker cards for non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you to all the speakers. This time, we'll move on to any staff communications on items of community interest?
Yes, Mayor, council members, I wanna share some good news that we announced this week. The city of Monobello was a recipient of a $1.5 million appropriation by the state of California towards building a new Wellland Fire Station in North Monobello. As many of you may know, we don't have a fire station in our most fire-prone area. Thankfully, through the advocacy of Senator Bob Archuleta, we were able to get this, this funding. I do wanna thank our fire department, our staff. Spent a lot of hours on putting together a proposal. This is frankly the first step. $1.5 million will not build us a new fire station. It's our job at this point to kind of figure out how do we come up with more money, so we will be working with our, our federal partners, our local partners, and figure out what's the best process for us to be able to build this fire station. So, so we just wanna mention that for the community. This is coming in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. That's great news for, for our fire department and for the whole city of Monobello. All right, we'll be moving on to item number seven, the public hearing. City attorney, I will be recusing myself from this item.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Yes, at this time, the mayor will be stepping aside and from participating in this item inasmuch as he has performed business services for Ultimate, the applicant. And with that, the record should further reflect, the mayor is stepping out of the room, and now the Mayor Protem, Tamayo, will preside over the hearing of item number seven, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance approving Development Agreement Number 03-24, Agreement Number 4417 between the city of Monobello and Ultimate Health Services Corporation in connection with the establishment and operation of a private art gallery within a commercial unit in the Monobello Town Square Shopping Center located at 1401 North Monobello Boulevard, Monobello, California. And Madam Mayor Protem, it's appropriate at this time to ask staff if they have a staff report to present.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there a staff report to present?
Mayor Protem, we do not have a staff report, but the applicant will be making a presentation.
Presentation, great. We'll have a presentation.
At this time, then, we'll open the public hearing for purposes of public comment. This time, the presentation from the applicant and the applicant's representative.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Protem, honorable city council members and city staff and members of the community. My name is Lizares Covelo, Vice President of Government Relations and Civic Engagement at Ultimate Health Services. You all see my colleague Benisa listed up there. Unfortunately, while she really wanted to make it today, she got in a slight fender-bender. She's okay, so I am stepping in on her behalf. Thank you for your leadership and your continued commitment to arts, culture, and community well-being in Monobello. Monobello has long celebrated its people. This city understands that art and culture reflect who we are and bring us together. We are here tonight to respectfully ask for your support and approval of the Alta, a dedicated cultural space that will serve as a home for Chicano-Latino art and welcoming, and welcoming gathering place for the entire community. For more than 55 years, Ultimate has stood for one simple truth: Everyone deserves access to health, to healthcare delivered with dignity, respect, and cultural understanding. Through the decades, we have learned that healing extends beyond the exam room. Health is physical, emotional, cultural, and collective. From clinics to community programs and through our nationally-recognized Altamed Art Collection, we bring health and culture together so that every patient feels welcome. At Ultimate, health is more than a medical appointment. True healing happens when people are surrounded by spaces that reflect who they are and where they come from. That is why art is part of our care model. Our collection lives in our clinics, offices, and community spaces. It welcomes patients the moment they walk in and sends a clear message. You belong here. The Alta is the next step in this journey. It will be a place where art and healing come together, where artists and community members can gather, create, and find comfort in cultural expression. Caring for mind and spirit strengthens the health of the whole person and the whole community. Though one of its functions is an office center to coordinate Ultimate's art programming, inclusive of offices, meeting space, and an art gallery, the Alta is more than an office. It will be a living, breathing art space with gallery exhibitions, art workshops, and educational programming that will engage residents of all ages. It will be a place for families, artists, students, and anyone seeking inspiration and connection. It is a place designed for people and community. We are before you this evening to request your support and approval for the development agreement so that we can open this space to the community for special events and programming related to arts and culture. The Alta is located at 1401 North Montebello Road within the Montebello Town Square Shopping Center. The Alta is located completely within the existing structure, surrounded by ample parking and retail and commercial uses. As you've heard from the city, the Alta will encompass approximately 15,700 square feet in total, with designated spaces for offices, art storage space, and an art gallery, and an ancillary space where we will host community and educational events. The Planning Commission approved the CUP during the October 7th hearing. We are respectfully requesting your approval of the development agreement to make portions of the space open to the public for special events and for the Alta's arts and cultural programs. In addition, we respectfully request that this council add a finding that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Class 1 CEQA exemption for existing facilities. This is in addition to the staff's recommendation of the common sense exception. We are in agreement with staff's recommendations and request this request this addition to the findings for clarity. This dual-exception approach is consistent with staff's findings and recommendations during the October 7th Planning Commission hearing and provides additional assurances to the public that all environmental requirements have been satisfied. The gallery exhibitions will highlight the richness of the Chicano-Latino art. The Alta will be open and accessible to Montebello residents, local artists, and visitors. It will be a place to experience beauty, learn something new, and take pride in the stories that defined our community. Through our Altmed Art Collection, thousands of works by Chicano-Latino and Latin American artists are displayed across our health centers to create spaces that are welcoming, hopeful, and filled with pride. We also partner with local artists to bring workshops and classes into our communities. Art helps people feel seen, preserves heritage, and connects generations. We have also integrated art into our program for all-inclusive care for the elderly, where creative expression supports mental health, builds connection, and strengthens memory. Across our organization, we see how art transforms a space and uplifts people. The Alta is part of this mission. By opening this space to the public, we can offer arts workshops and educational programs for students, families, and lifelong learners. We can provide a safe space for cultural expression where every resident feels welcome to explore, create, and connect. This project arrives at a meaningful moment. Many families in and around Montebello are navigating uncertainty and fear from impact of the heightened immigration enforcement activities. In times like these, spaces that nurture belonging and pride are vital. The Alta will serve as an anchor of hope and resilience. It will offer a place to gather, find strength in community, and heal through creativity. We are proud to bring this space to life in partnership with the city of Montebello. Montebello has always celebrated its people and its culture. This city's artistic tradition is strong. From the Montebello Art Walk downtown to the Armenian Genocide Martyrs Monument to murals and cultural festivals across the city. Montebello shows that art is essential to civic life and deeply integrated into the city's identity. The Alta will carry this tradition forward. It is a natural extension of Montebello's investment in culture, public art, and creative spaces. The Alta is more than a building. It is a cultural hub that brings people together. It will attract visitors from across the region, foster cultural pride, and strengthen Montebello's identity as a center for Chicano and Latino art. The city is not only a place to live, it is a place where culture thrives and creativity is celebrated. When families see their stories reflected in the art around them, they know they are not alone. They know Montebello values every voice and that culture will continue to flourish regardless of the challenges we face. For us, the Alta is a great example of a true public-private partnership. It demonstrates what can happen when a nonprofit and a city share a vision of community well-being and work together to bring that vision to life. Altmed is committed to this collaboration. We will continue working closely with city staff to ensure the project aligns with Montebello's goals and delivers lasting public benefits. Some of the project's benefits include, but are not limited to, a $200,000 public benefit issued to the city for its investment in the community, making the Alta available for the city's use of civic events, and expanding access to the arts by opening the private art gallery and collaborative spaces to the public for special events and for programming related to arts and culture. As a proud partner of the community, Altmed is pleased to report that these benefits will be provided in partnership with the city of Montebello as part of our shared goals of driving sustainable and meaningful impacts through creative spaces and through celebration of culture and arts. Together, we can build a space that reflects the beauty, strength, and diversity of this city. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your partnership and your commitment to Montebello's future. We are happy to report that we've secured support from 31 people or leaders, including civic leaders, business owners, and members of this community. The letter of support with their signatures is included in your packets. Tonight, together with the 31 signatories to our support letter, we respectfully ask for your approval of the development agreement and the addition of the Class 1 CEQA exemption to staff's CEQA exemption findings so we can move forward and bring the Alta to life. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Altmed. We appreciate the presentation. At this time, we will open up the public hearing. It is 7:58. And we will take anybody wishing to speak on this item and address the council.
And, Madam Mayor, before you take any testimony, you may want to inquire from your colleagues if there's any questions of the applicant.
Okay.
Do that
Do that what?
Through the line of the roll call for tonight, starting with Councilmember Alonso. Are there any questions?
Question?
Any questions?
I do. I have one quick question. Thank you for the presentation. So just to be clear, this is not a space that is exclusive from members of the Altmed Medical Group, right? It's for residents of Montevideo in general?
Yes, we would love to plan with you all, with the city, to open it up to the community for special programming, exhibits, et cetera, and then obviously for some civic events as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Romero?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. And again, this is a very exciting project, and I'm definitely a big supporter of the art, so I'm excited to see that. We have received some emails from residents that were definitely big proponents of this and wanted to see this happen, so I'm excited about this.
Thank you.
And thank you again for being here today, and it's been a long time coming. I think we've been working for a while on trying to reach this milestone, so I'm very excited also to have it reach the council today. I do have a question. I did read the staff report and the specifics about the agreement, and it refers to where the details are of the city use of the art gallery for public events. And it refers to Exhibit D, but that Exhibit D is not included, which was the access agreement. So what is your, how do you foresee the city's use of the space? What are the restrictions, the cost, or what are the details of that? So the city's use of the space, and then also the community, you talked about this being a community space. Can the community go directly to you to use this space without having to go through the city? If you can describe a little bit about that?
Sure, and I might invite some of my colleagues who are here who can answer the question. But we would love to work with the city, like we said, to come up with what does that access agreement look like? And then in terms of access to the community, it would be for special events, right? That we would work with you all, special exhibits, et cetera. And I think my, maybe Susana or Luz Maria, if you all want to speak to to access, sorry, access to the public in general? Yep? Either one.
Yes, if you'd please step forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. While they come up, if I may just add on the access agreement, that was a mission by the city's part. I think it, Altmed is, as you can tell, incredible presentation, really highlighting the incredible benefits to not only the city but the residents, and just really touching to a cultural focal point that is much needed in our city. With that said, obviously, they mentioned that they want to be partners with our city. The access agreement, it may be proven for the council to give us the authority to kind of figure out what that looks like in terms of what the uses. Now, you may, maybe, but specific to you, I think what the Mayor Pro Tem was asking about is how do you envision the use being from the city in terms of with the facility? And then I think the second part, which is different, is the public, right? But I think you mentioned the public uses through special events to that extent, right? Where in my mind, they're being invited to come and view the art, be a part of the program, right? But if you mind elaborating on that, that'd be helpful.
So that's correct. I'm Luz Maria Chavez, Vice President of Facilities for Altmed. And it would be special events that would be held at the Alta and organized by Altmed. So it would be by invitation for the community members. So it's not like open to the public, you know, on a daily basis.
Okay, and that would be like invitation to residents, residents of Montebello, or?
It would be to all.
Okay.
So it would be if we're having an exhibition in the gallery space, there would be open invitation. People would reserve the time to come and visit.
Okay, great. And the reason I just keep asking these questions, I know, because the community is very excited to have this space, and I just want to be clear, the use of the space and making sure that the residents and the community will be able to enjoy it as well.
Definitely, they will. And there's also educational programs. They're going to, will work with a different school district as well, and schools.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I'll just briefly add that we're very excited actually to partner with the school district to come up with what our education program can look like. I live in Whittier, so I'm really excited for it too, because we've been working also with the Whittier Unified High School District, El Rancho, Montebello. And so we would love to come up with some programming, both for the community but also local artists, and have that be a space for them here in the city as well.
Great.
Mayor Pro Tem also And this is for Joe Planning? Just that we can, I know there was a reference made for the request for the CEQA exemption?
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Yes, staff is in agreement with the addition of the Class 1 categorical exemption for existing facilities.
I think we also have Councilmember Peralta on the line, so I don't know. Councilmember, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, wonderful. Okay. No additional questions. I appreciate Mayor Pro Tem just trying to clarify in terms of how our community can also be integrated into some of the programming, and just want to thank Altmed for their partnership. Thank you.
And then, Mayor Pro Tem, then, at this time, it's appropriate to ask if there's a public testimony of anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the application, in favor of the application. Please step forward and state your name.
Good evening. I'm Michael Azarga, President and CEO of Telacu. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you on this very important matter. For more than 30 years, our organization has been so privileged to work in partnership with the city of Montebello to create important new community assets that serve the people of this great city which you lead. The assets we have built together, affordable housing specifically serving existing senior citizen residents of Montebello and their families, revitalized retail space serving the needs of local residents, and park facilities that enhance the quality of life in Montebello neighborhoods. Their quality and the positive community impacts they continually create speak for themselves. But they especially speak to the visionary leadership it takes to create positive community impacts for our future. I rise this evening to respectfully request your approval of an incredibly vital proposed new community and cultural asset that will be a great addition to the vitality of this city. As you've heard, the Alta Project, which is being created by one of the most valued and treasured institutions in our region, Ultimate Health Services, represents what is perhaps a once-in-a-generation opportunity for the city of Montebello. Through the Alta Project, Montebello will become home to a curated space where art, culture, and community thrive. I predict that this space will gain national recognition for its ability to synthesize in a single location an entirely unique blend of artistic creativity, human connectedness, and most especially, mental, social, and physical well-being in a season of our nation's history in which these values so desperately need to be protected, preserved, and enhanced. I commend all of you for your forward-thinking leadership that supports a wonderful project like the Alta. And I respectfully urge your eye votes in approving this agenda item. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in support of the application?
We have Dr. Pinedo with MAOF.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city leadership. My name is Dr. Sidia Copinado. I'm the President and CEO of MAOF headquartered here in Montebello. And thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak tonight and for your continued leadership in this community. I'm here in support of the Alta Project. I believe that this project is more than just an art gallery. I believe it is a cultural anchor that reflects Montebello's identity, history, and aspirations. The Alta will be a vibrant, living hub where art, cultura, and community can come together. It'll host exhibitions, workshops, programming, and educational opportunities that could connect generations while celebrating the contributions of the Chicano and Latino communities and the contributions to the American story. Dolores Huerta once said, "Seeing yourself reflected brings you dignity." The Alta will provide just that. A place where families can see their culture honored and their stories elevated with pride, giving them and all of us dignity. Art is not only about beauty, it is also about healing, identity, and belonging. During a time when division and uncertainty heavily weigh on society, spaces like the Alta can help restore hope, resilience, and unity. We've seen from the Chich Museum in the city of Riverside, where I happen to sit on that board, that cultural spaces like these bring measurable economic impact. They create jobs, they attract visitors, and they strengthen the local community and businesses. And Montebello can experience similar benefits with this particular project. And Montebello can experience similar benefits with this particular project. True community presence and service is more than just servicing the community and their needs. True community well-being goes beyond services. It requires spaces where people can celebrate their culture, nurture creativity, and feel rooted in dignity, and the ALTA will realize that vision while strengthening connections across generations. Altmed's Health Services and their commitment to community wellness and their recognition that art, culture, and healing are inseparable is part and true to this project. I believe that by approving the ALTA, you affirm Montebello's legacy as a center of culture, expand economic opportunities, and invest in the dignity of its people. And so on behalf of the families we serve, I proudly and respectfully urge your support for this project. Thank you for your vision, your leadership, in advancing a project that will bring pride, healing, and growth to the city of Montebello. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We also have Gray Gonzalez in support.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. Tonight, I'm here to support the ALTA and look forward to the improvement in Montebello's cultural and artistic growth. The ALTA will add vibrancy, community, and culture through art. For this community in particular, the Latino and Chicano focus will provide a touchstone and a means to not only view and appreciate art but also to create it. You can measure society by the way it supports schools and culture. Here is our chance to support both. I am a 50-year resident of the city. I'm also a graduate of Kentwell High School. I also have been teaching high school art history for the past 20 years. I try to appreciate the value and teach the value of artistic expression every day. To establish the ALTA Art Project in my home city would represent a triumph for us all. It would provide a source of pride. Apart from the Sanchez Adobe, Montebello is an art desert. And also some occasional displays at the library. The word ALTA in Spanish, of course, means high. This is our chance to elevate our city. I urge the city council to support this project. Thank you for the important work that you do.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor Pro Tem, that does conclude all the speaker cards we received for this item. And then we'll inquire, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council in support of the application? Please step forward and state your name.
My name is Liseth Guerra, and I am the Community Library Manager here at the Montebello Library. You guys maybe met me when I was the librarian and archivist at UCLA's Chicano Studies Research Center, but now I'm here, and you didn't expect me. I had no idea you were proposing this, but I'm listening to you, and I stayed longer. I was supposed to leave 13 minutes ago. But now that I have been on the ground here working with the public, I will say that when you said "art desert," that really struck me because we're also a literacy desert. And I see that in my library where I'm trying to get children, adults, seniors, excited about reading, excited about art, excited about history, and it's been challenging. I've been doing more displays to get people interested, and I can really see the benefit of having this space here in the community where people like me can really encourage our teachers, our students, our community members to go to this space and see themselves reflected in these collections because, as maybe many of you have experienced, I remember growing up as a child going on these field trips to museums and not seeing myself anywhere. And so, yes, it was exciting, you know, you saw whatever Roman, Greek, whatever piece, but it didn't speak to me at all.